Okay, so with that, all those in favor, opposed, carried, we're now moving to special close. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda in presentations, D1 is Integrated Stormwater Management Plan. And we have staff on hand to provide us with that presentation. Thank you.
Your worship, this is a follow-up or is in response to council's direction in terms of the presentation that council asked for. And Ms. Lee, Megan Lee, is here to make the presentation. She's supported by Mr. Larson, as well as Mr. Anderson and Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. Welcome here.
Thank you. So I'm Megan Lee, Water Resources Planning Engineer. This presentation discusses the ISMP process, which is Integrated Stormwater Management Plan. So this presentation is in response to the council resolution regarding an ISMP for West Creek in relation to the Gloucester development resulting from the April 10th council meeting. I will begin with general info, information on ISMPs and then discuss West Creek specifically. So an ISMP is a guiding document identifying goals and targets on a watershed-based level. It's an ecosystem-based approach for stormwater management, and it works to inform future decisions within that watershed. There are four general steps to developing an ISMP. Initially is what you have, which includes inventories, environmental infrastructure, stormwater systems, land use zoning, as well as data collection, stream flow, water quality, environmental data, soils, as well as testing and monitoring to collect any data that's missing. Then what you want is step two, which is identifying realistic goals for the watershed. This is in consultation with stakeholders to develop a vision for the watershed. Step three is how to get that, which is the analysis, the stormwater modeling, identifying existing and required infrastructure, and then it develops the recommendations and targets for that watershed. And the fourth step to the ISMP is adaptive management, which is how to stay on target, includes monitoring programs and strategies to ensure this is a living document. So the township specifically uses ISMPs to inform plan development, community plans, neighborhood plans, engineering services, and land use, as well as guiding requirements for development applications, and then identifying capital projects, so the identification and prioritization of capital works. The township is required to complete ISMPs for urbanized watersheds by the Ministry of Environment as a member municipality of Metro Vancouver. So those are watersheds with 20% or more urban development, either developed or set for development, as well as being required to update those ISMPs on a 12-year cycle. So the West Creek watershed specifically is outlined in blue, the Gloucester area in red. West Creek watershed is total 1,670 hectares. Of the 1,670, Gloucester accounts for approximately 17.8%. So we don't meet the threshold for requiring an ISMP under the Liquid Waste Management Plan. However, we can undertake an ISMP voluntarily for any watershed in the township, but it should be considered that ISMPs require significant resources, including staff time and budget, as well as the utility of an ISMP decreases as the developer area decreases in that watershed. So the less development, the less opportunities there are to implement the recommendations of an ISMP. It's also worth noting that Gloucester is close to being fully developed. So an ISMP in West Creek would be most effective in influencing future redevelopment. ISMPs are also not retroactive, so the recommendations cannot be put on existing developments. Also, the question arose from the council resolution about completing partial ISMPs. So first, to address completing an inventory only, this would be the inventory and data collection. It would be very, little value on its own, as the inventory and the data work to inform the recommendations in the later steps of the ISMP, and the recommendations are what informs decisions on the development. So without the recommendations, there aren't a lot of, isn't a lot of value. And then to complete a smaller ISMP focusing on the Gloucester area only would not meet the goals of an ISMP. The downstream impacts of development are significant for stormwater, and Gloucester is the upper end of the watershed. So to complete an ISMP only on Gloucester would not consider the downstream impacts. So it would be of little value as well. To address the costs, the costs for ISMPs are based on the complexity, the size of the watershed, existing data, level of current development and infrastructure within that watershed. We've completed five ISMPs, and our average cost for full complete ISMPs is around $150,000. The pie chart is a breakdown of average costs across Metro Vancouver for other member municipalities, based on per hectare cost. Again, to address completing a partial ISMP, the step one, the data collection, the inventory, accounts for approximately 30% of the cost, but likely not 30% of the value. So it would probably be of little value to undertake step one only. And finally, the time to complete an ISMP in the experience of the five ISMPs conducted by the township is approximately 1.5 to 2 years, and this is consistent with other municipalities as well. So to relate this back to Gloucester, the original BD Group development was developed to the 1994 subdivision and development bylaw, which had different requirements, including the stormwater detention requirements limiting to 25-year, 24-hour storm. BD has indicated that they will provide the required funding to undertake an ISMP for West Creek in the context of their development community amendment application, which would also include updating the flow control structures of the pond to closer resemble our current bylaw, which addresses a wider range of storm events. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Several, it's lighting up, there's a few questions here. Councilor Fox is first.
Oh, thank you. And thanks for your presentation today. I can take away that ISMPs are not just simply a report to council. There's a lot more that goes into them than certainly that would entail. And saying that it's going to, it would take a year and a half to two years to re-update or complete an ISMP in the, in the West Creek area. Can you go back to that one slide that shows the map of the whole West Creek? Yeah, watershed area? So we're looking here at the Gloucester, it's 17.8% of the complete West Creek watershed area. So it's, it is a headwaters, we've agreed to that, but there's a lot of other flow into the West Creek itself before it reaches the Fraser River. An ISMP, and I guess, I'm, the concern is with Gloucester, but an ISMP is of little or no value if I take away from what you've said, unless you do the whole thing. Is that correct?
Yes, especially in this case because Gloucester is the headwaters, so it would not address the downstream conditions.
So, and I mean, in terms of West Creek, I mean, we've invested, we, it's a bigger we than the TOL, in the West Creek wetlands, and there's, I think that includes Ponder Park, if I'm not mistaken, does it include Ponder Park? Anybody know? No, okay. I think, I think it does in that corner up there, but there are a lot of other elements and areas and feeders that would have to be completed and shown in an ISMP, a complete and valued ISMP. Okay, so my question is, if I understand correctly from some comments made, BD has been working with you relative to inventory of the, their area, is that correct? I think you mentioned data collection and inventory.
Data collection and inventory is part of the first step of an ISMP, but we haven't been working towards that for an ISMP. I don't know if that-
Oh, has BD been-
We haven't initiated any steps of the ISMP to date.
Okay, so you haven't initiated any steps specific to that. Have they volunteered any information relative to that at this point in time, do you know? I may be asking the wrong person the wrong question.
Or, your worship?
Yes, we're currently working with BD in regards to their OCP and rezon, Gulf Course lands, and they have offered to contribute a portion of the total cost of an ISMP should the township decide to pursue what for West Creek.
And that would be the complete ISMP? That would be the whole thing, not just their own interests in Gloucester?
Correct.
Okay, so that-
And your worship, just to provide additional information, that maybe what the current status of discussions has been or is, staff's goal ultimately is to continue negotiations such that it is not just a contribution, but rather consideration of coverage of the entire costs of the ISMP in the context of their application.
Okay, and so I think it was mentioned that's about $150,000 on average to complete an ISMP. Would we do that internally, or do we do that by contract?
ISMPs are done by contract, they're put to consultants that specialize in integrated stormwater management plans.
Okay, so there would be an outside consultant that would complete that?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that's all the questions I have at this point, to me. Have some more later.
Councilor Anderson, there you go.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I understand that from consistently reviewing the situation and asking staff, that really the proponent is putting forward their desire or agreeing to pay for this, but only as a condition of them getting a conversion of the golf course lands that they're asking for. So I just want to put out there that that was never the intention, that it was more or less a user-pay principle of who would be benefiting, but not the fact that in return for this, I'm going to call it relatively modest amount of money relative to what they are going to achieve, if they can get this land as a golf course, are you 10 zoning converted to industrial? That's going to be a multimillion-dollar land left for them. So I just, I just want to say that my intention was never to be supportive of the idea that one was contingent on the other. You know, there are ways, I guess, to look at the watershed and say, well, you know, it's a headwaters, and maybe there is other uses and development that could happen, but it's minimal, and we've decided that this doesn't meet the cutoff or the criteria. But my feeling is, from a science point of view, that in fact, if you've got the heavy concentration of usage in an area that's by the most sensitive headwaters area, it makes it even more compelling that you would want to do that. And I guess my, my question really is, if there was a midpoint between an Integrated Stormwater Management Plan and just setting out a view suggested that you feel it would be of minimal use relative to the cost of just having an inventory, what would that look like?
So, so I understand your question, so somewhere between, like a-
A full-blown, yeah.
Like a half ISMP?
Well, well, something that more or less meets, because my problem is, if you don't do an Integrated Stormwater Management Plan, I can see in this instance that many of the developments that are already taken place, it can't be retroactive, but there's a huge social component to doing that. It revolves, you know, revolves around asking community groups, what amenities would you like? Are there environmentally sensitive areas that we have to really be aware of? And there is a huge history here in which I personally feel that there has been in the past land conversions to the benefit of this corporation, which did not result in any social benefit, contrary to what was promised at the time. There was ballparks, there was an interpretive center, many trails. Therefore, I'm kind of wondering, you know, what is the calculus that we're putting towards this? And if it costs $250,000 for a scientific assessment of what we actually should be allowing, then I would say that that's a good investment. I would prefer the township not have to do it ourselves, but I, as I said, I don't think it should be a condition of whether or not we're agreeing to the conversion of those lands.
I just want to clarify, I don't think Ms. Lee said that it was a condition, she just said that it is something that is being negotiated. It still leaves council the decision-making process, if they wish to fund it through township funds or to continue it on its path. I don't think Ms. Lee said that, she just gave us a fax on what it was.
Okay, well, I'd just like to clarify, the word context is very vague. So my understanding, I could be wrong, and I would stand to be corrected, but the intention is that if this is going forward, the only way that this corporation intends to pay for this is it becomes part of the condition of the rezoning.
Mr. Seffy, I think is more appropriate to answer those questions.
Thank you, your worship. Perhaps I can just refresh council's memory and the public collectively. There was a resolution by council to ask the BD Group to undertake an Integrated Stormwater Management Plan for the, for the West Creek watershed. Just ask. So staff did ask, and the BD Group respectfully declined. However, they did come back and say, if, if such was to be in the context of our application, in other words, if they were to be able to at least present their application for a community plan amendment to convert some portions of the golf course into industrial lands, they would be willing to consider that as part of the cost of doing business, because it would obviously be a gain for them as well. So as council, or at least members of council are aware, staff has been in discussion and negotiations with the BD Group for the past several years in terms of that application with respect to many, many components, including development cost charges and how they're to be levied, services, works and services, all the infrastructure needs, as well as the preparation of an Integrated Stormwater Management Plan. So that will at some point come to council, ideally with, with illicit conditions that council will then see fit to, to agree and approve, or otherwise advise staff that it's not acceptable and either reject it or add additional conditions.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation today. Just a couple of questions. The, the 20% is sort of the trigger point to have a required ISMP, and it's, you mentioned we're at 17.8 in terms of development, and said that we're close to being, Gloucester is close to being fully developed. Any, any idea of, of when you say close to, what that, is there a point in which it could develop to that, where it would trigger that, get to that 20% and trigger it? Like, do you have any sense of that?
I believe the, the entire Gloucester, 17.8% of the entire watershed, and a good portion of that 17.8% is already developed. And so the question, is the question, how much is developed of the 17.8%?
No, I guess the question is- So that can't get bigger, but I think what was mentioned was that possible redevelopment in the future might lead us to having to do an ISMP. So I'm wondering what you meant maybe by that? Are you talking that there's the potential that the Gloucester area would be expanded? Is that what you mean, or if it was to be expanded?
So let me clarify. So the entire area of Gloucester, developed and undeveloped right now, is 17.8. So those boundaries aren't changing. However, if one industrial property chose to redevelop, that may trigger recommendations if we had an ISMP in place.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, that's helpful. So when, when you do an ISMP, do they, I'm not as familiar with them, do they have a life to them, or do they, are they renewed, are they, do they last for 10 years, are they lifetime, how does that work?
An ISMP is intended to be a living document, so through adaptive management, it does, it's supposed to be relevant as things change, however, they should be renewed on a 12-year cycle.
12 years. So when you say it's around $150,000, is there an ongoing cost because it's a living document, or will you experience a cost at this 12-year period when you re-renew it or redo it, you'd experience that cost?
That's right. So when it's renewed, there would be additional budget required for the renewal.
Okay, but no, no annual kind of cost to a living-
There are annual costs for, for stream flow monitoring and environmental monitoring, things like that, but they don't come out of the ISMP, that we have separate programs for those.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yeah, we have a sustainability charter, which basically the purpose is to protect the natural resources and habitat that we've got for future generations. And watersheds are like really important in the township, would you agree with that?
I would agree.
Yeah. And 50% of the water that's used in the township is coming from the aquifers that are fed by these watersheds, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Something close to that.
Okay, so how many aquifers are affected by the West Creek watershed?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head.
Off the top of your head, okay. But the protection of this watershed means we're protecting our aquifers going forward?
It would, it would certainly work towards that.
Yeah, okay. The 20% trigger point, as Counselor Whitmarsh measured or mentioned, where did, where does this 20% come from? Is this like a provincial standard, or?
Correct. So the Liquid Waste Management Plan from the Ministry of Environment requires member municipalities of Metro Vancouver, which includes us, to undertake ISMPs for watersheds with 20% or more development.
And has there been any shifting in this number over the years, or is it just still-
The 20% threshold has been continuous.
So it's just, so nobody's revisited whether we need to have a lower threshold in view of economic or environmental impacts?
As the presentation mentioned, we can voluntarily undertake an ISMP for any watershed that we would like, but we're only required the 20% threshold.
So, but if water is, is as important to us as a community, which it essentially is, it almost seems to me it makes sense that we would voluntarily want to have a watershed, an ISMP for every watershed in the township, right? If we really are serious about protecting our water resources.
I mean, as, as it takes considerable budget, time and resources to complete ISMPs, that would be a decision council would have to make.
Okay. So this idea that, like Gloucester, BD Corporation wants to take a large number of acres and convert it from its current green to industrial, would that have an impact on this watershed going forward?
I mean, every development has an impact on the watershed, depending on what the proposal looks like. It, it may be better if they're augmenting their ponds, as discussed, but it'd be hard to comment on that without, without looking at their proposal.
But if it, so it almost makes sense that we have an ISMP for this area before we let them develop, right? So we know what the impact will be if they do develop? Then letting them do one concurrently as they're developing, because it would seem to me that the picture of the watershed might change.
I mean, the, the small area we're talking about is, is a very small component of the watershed. They may do an impact assessment as part of that particular development.
It could certainly be a condition, if it was to get to that point, that council could put onto the developer that prior to any rezoning, that would be a condition that it would have to be complete, I think council has-
So that, that could be a motion we could make right now, that if an application to redevelop any portion of Gloucester comes forward, an ISMP would have to be completed before the application would be considered?
It certainly, council can make a motion any time, I think it would be more appropriate. Once we see something, there may never be anything forward, but Mr. Backen and Mr. Seffy are both, I think staff want to jump in on this and have some-
Just a few preliminary comments, your worship. The, the comments are very sound, but the, the challenge we're facing is we're looking for a plan for an area that's really effectively been built out, so that's one of the challenges. It really comes down to our allocation of resources issue with what we're, what some staff are trying to indicate is that these are certainly meritorious instruments, they have value, but are these something that should preempt our other priorities that we have going on at any given time? Council can certainly say that's the case, but we're looking at an area that's been around for quite some time. That issue about the, about the plan is a bit different than the conditions of development. There's been a lot of discussion going on that the conditions of development here should include this plan or should not include that plan, and that's, that's fair game. The challenge, though, is really council will have to deliberate on the development application, when and if it comes forward, and make the decisions, and they could actually decide to support it or to reject it, regardless of the status of this plan itself. I think we're spending a lot of time thinking the plan will dictate development. Because the area is so significantly built out, it's not going to be something the plan will support or reject, it'll simply have consequences and ways to deal with those. The more fundamental issue, and this was mentioned by some members of council, is whether or not council will entertain the change that's contemplated from the golf course to other areas, and if so, what those conditions would be, or maybe it's not possible to do so. That's, I think, the real issue that council has, and that's truly a development issue that we'll have to tackle once we have something we can put before council. I hesitate to put conditions on an application that we haven't seen yet. I think we could put the conditions on certainly, once there's actually an application before council. I think staff, having heard this, are highly likely to recommend that that's a condition that comes before council with any report, but to appear to be, I guess, predetermining the application in any way is something we would seek to avoid at this point, because I think we've heard what the issues are, but we don't want to give the BD Group any consideration that, that we're for this or opposed to this at this point. We have to deliberate on the, on the application with an open mind. Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, just to add, what I wanted to say was the fact that regardless of whether an Integrated Stormwater Management Plan is being contemplated or not, the requirements for a development would be to undertake a stormwater management plan. And I was going to ask either Mr. Larson or Ms. Lee to perhaps very briefly explain the difference between, or the additional requirements that are, are part of an ISMP as opposed to a SWMP. Mr. Larson, can you take a stab at that and just explain what additional requirements might be imposed? might be imposed?
Thank you. Through your worship, so yeah, it's they're quite different things. Obviously, a stormwater management for a site looks at that site and those site requirements, and it would also look at what the impacts would be to downstream properties throughout the watershed, whereas an ISMP is really a guiding document. There's nothing in an ISMP that says these properties must do A, B, and C before we allow development. What it allows is those principles set in place, so when counsel sees an application, they can look at those principles and say, as a township, these are some of the things we want to see or we don't want to see. We've went out, we've talked to the public, we've done our consultation, and we have a vision for what this watershed's going to look like. In this particular case, most of Gloucester is already built out. So the vision is is still there, but unless there's a significant number of properties being redeveloped, it has limited use. So for a a site stormwater management plan, i- i- it looks at the area, what conditions are there, what the environmental values are, and it looks specifically of what that property would positively or negatively contribute to the surrounding areas. So my recommendation would be, since Gloucester has already been developed, unless there's some significant redeveloping contemplated, probably the the my recommendation to focus the efforts would be on this, the particular development proposals that come in, and what those development proposals can do to detain water on their site, so that the pre-development conditions are maintained post-development, and that the environmental benefits are are maintained in the area. So they're not going to be contributing to negatively downstream, such as sedimentation or pollutants, those types of things.
So the reconfiguration of the the outlet structures, the reconfiguration of ponds, those will be part of the stormwater stormwater management plan regardless?
Absolutely. And it's my understanding that staffer and have been in discussions with the developer because when Gloucester bylaw was came to be in nineteen ninety four, we were using different data than we are today, or different requirements. So for example, we would say that your pre-development conditions have to be and have to detain a twenty-five-year storm event, for example. But now our bylaw, our current bylaw says you need to do a five-year, it has to meet a two-year, a five-year, a ten-year, twenty-five, and a hundred. So there's a lot more requirements in that regard.
So the what you're saying here is this integrated stormwater management plan is a principal document. So the fact that twenty percent is what triggers it, is that not a principle as well, too? Like, do we have the option of saying, you know what, given the importance of water resources in our community, twenty percent isn't good enough anymore? We want to bring it down to fifteen or ten percent?
Through your worship, yes, the township can decide to do a an ISMP at any time, at any percentage. It it's a matter of prioritizing and determining what you're trying to protect, how much resources are available in terms of staff time, funding. For example, I believe the next ISMP on staff's priority list to meet the Ministry of Environment's requirements is Northwest Langley Industrial Area. So that area has been built out a lot higher than obviously this area. So if we were to defer or or to proceed with an ISMP for Gloucester West Creek watershed, that would likely delay the the plans for the other the watersheds that we have on our list.
Okay. But Gloucester, you know, it may be significantly developed, but it seems to me over the last three years, there's been a number of issues with stormwater and fish kill and everything else up there, illegal tree removal, things that would affect the watershed. So maybe maybe Gloucester is the one that needs it more?
Backen.
That's again a priority issue. I think the issues that were raised are certainly valid, but those are also issues that have other remedies, the I guess trapping, cutting of trees, flooding, all those sorts of things. Those can be addressed outside of it. I guess the peril would be if they were to force that to be a priority, what would that do to the other watersheds or the the other plans that are underway? But having said that, counsel can certainly prioritize as they see fit and and make that a higher priority than the ones that Mr. Larson suggested.
Okay, so but going back to my original question that started this little discussion around this, is there legally anything that prohibits us from requiring a stormwater management plan to be completed for this watershed before counsel will entertain any further development applications in Gloucester? Legally, is there anything that prohibits us from doing that?
Your worship, as a as a requirement, there's no prohibition, as long as it's not seen to be something that is actually indicating counsel's disposition to an application in the area. The risk we run in these circumstances is always one that there is evidence of a predisposition of counsel's decision. So to the extent that there is valid and bona fide grounds for this report, as we see in many areas, it's perfectly appropriate. The challenge is when we see an area that's been developed so much, and we see the implications as being relatively minor, certainly important but relatively minor, it leads one to the potential argument that could be made that this is actually a predisposition, and that's what we seek to avoid. So as long as we can buttress that to indicate that the the intent is required and needed and necessary with all the available scientific evidence, that's that's appropriate. But that's where it becomes a bit of a challenge with the information we're receiving. It can be done, but it's a bit tricky, is what I'm trying to say.
I was saying, there is a risk. I heard you say risk.
Yeah, but there's a risk with anything. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, where's the community amenity here? The community amenity is protection of this watershed for the long-term use of this community. And that amenity needs to be in place. And I don't, you know, I it's like Brookswood, developing Brookswood. Can applications come through while we're in the process of of approving a new OCP? Should they be allowed to come through? I I just don't understand where legally we can't say, this protection of this watershed is part of our sustainability charter, we want a green, healthy community for our children and our grandchildren, and these are the protections we want to see in place before we're even going to entertain further development.
Your worship, there's there's really two parts to it. The the requirements that are being referenced, I think, are certainly integral parts of any community's growth. I think they're very important, but they're not necessarily community amenities in the context of what we've been talking about. Those baselines, those principles can be required, it's then up to counsel to determine them. Amenities are usually going to be such things as infrastructure programs, space, green space, lands, something that's being preserved. Those are the amenities that are being discussed. And I make that distinction because I think there's an apprehension that that there that we have to do something to reach those levels of protection. I think what Mr. Larson is saying is that many of those protections already exist in place, but it's done in the context of when the development occurred, nineteen ninety four, and what was then in place. So that certainly can happen, and it can be improved upon, but it is something that has to be cautiously done, given the evidence, to make sure we understand what the implications are. Because the question that would always be asked by sophisticated developers is, why is this being brought forward now? What's the what's the purpose behind it? As long as we can answer those questions, that's fine, and it should go beyond the basic principles that we presume are always in place. As to the other suggestion is, can we actually, why do we entertain applications before there's a plan? We're obliged to entertain all applications. The application can in many cases be deferred, it can be delayed, it can be defeated, but it has to be considered. In the unique situation that was referenced in Brookswood, it goes back to the fact that in two thousand and fourteen, there was a plan that was defeated. So as a consequence, we have to process applications in the absence of the new plan and because of the nineteen eighty-seven plan. If there was no plan in place, that's certainly legitimate, but when in when two thousand and fourteen rolled around and that plan was defeated, it became very difficult for us to say, hold off. We're in the process of stopping all applications or putting them on hiatus until such time as there's a new plan in place, when the very plan that was being contemplated was no longer in place. That creates the anomaly, hence why we default back to the eighty-seven plan. And as we've done in those circumstances, tried to make sure that any applications are compliant with both the previous plan and the potential new plan.
Okay. So in nineteen ninety-four, BD came forward to the council of the day. Part of their application was they were going to have all this wonderful green space that was going to be a golf course. I don't know, was it a hundred acres or something like that?
Full eighteen hole golf course was probably a bit larger at that time, although it was an executive course.
Okay. So and council of the day then granted that application because of the community amenity. There's going to be lovely green space, there's going to be golf course. So golf course never really materialized, and now they want to take half of the community amenity that they got the approval on in nineteen ninety-four and convert it into more industrial. So the question that I have is, before we allow, before counsel even entertains, the removal of what was a community amenity in nineteen ninety-four should be preceded by having, okay, what is the impact downstream on this watershed if that conversion takes place? And in order for council of today to make that decision, we need to know what that impact will be. That's part of the information we need. That's why we need an ISMP.
Right. And that would ordinarily be part of the, I guess, application process, that there would be certain things that are required, whether it's the we'll call it the smaller plan or the larger plan. Those are valid preconditions that can occur. But even if there were those plans in place, the point I'm trying to make is counsel can still reject or accept any application based on the history, based on the use, because fundamentally, what's being contemplated here is a change of use from a density that contemplated or from a use that contemplated a golf course to a completely different use, which is industrial. A more fundamental question is counsel's position of the use. It might be more effective to simply say, we ratify the existing use. We will certainly have to entertain any applications, but as a statement of principle, to repurpose or restate that the council does not support conversion of the green space in Gloucester is probably a more direct and a more a more important and more defendable comment, because, of course, that was a condition of the prior plan. So one could simply say, we endorse the nineteen ninety-four council's position, the green space is necessary, and still require these other plans if the application proceeds, simply meaning that we still have to entertain those applications, but we do not need to actually do any technical analysis to make that statement of principle.
Okay. So this is something we could ask the township lawyers about, whether we could in fact require that an ISMP be done before an application comes to council relative to converting.
I think we could do an ISMP anytime counsel chooses to provide the funding to staff and prioritize it. We can do that anytime. We don't need legal advice for that. We can do it. And whether or not they put the applications in, you know, we can do it anytime. I think I've heard that loud and clear several times. So I don't know what why we need legal advice to find out if we can do it. We can do it. Just need counsel's direction. But whether we want to do that, and, you know, that's up to counsel to debate, and that'd be a whole separate discussion. Is that everything? Counselor Fox?
Yeah. There's a piece missing here, I think. We we started off with an excellent presentation on ISMP, and we've got into the specifics of an application here. And I appreciate the the perspective of the ISMP and the value of it, but my question, I guess, to start is, is an ISMP the end-all and the be-all? What happens if the application applicant comes through, not in not in Gloucester, but in anywhere, and has a substantial amount of technical analysis done by an outside consultant related to how the stormwater management aspects of that particular redevelopment or development will will take place? We we can look at it in a microcosmic perspective relative to that one development and relative to that bigger picture within that that area, as opposed to having an ISMP. Am I correct?
Through your worship, that's correct. So an ISMP is 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 an overarching document that's supposed to guide development in an area that is to be developed. So since Gloucester is already developed, an ISMP is not really intended to determine the impacts of a particular one development on the downstream environment.
Okay, so so and I think you mentioned, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Larson, that what your expectation for any new or redevelopment would be a two, five, ten, twenty-five, and a hundred, or whatever, I don't know what the numbers were, specifically up to a hundred, where in nineteen ninety-four, they only had to go to twenty-five years. Is that correct?
That's correct. So they weren't detaining for the more frequent events.
Right. So what we're expecting them to do in any application that were to be come forward would be to live up to what our new streamside setbacks are, what our new stormwater management expectations are, and so on and so forth. All those must be in any application, right?
Correct.
So as far as that goes. Now, there's the other element of, okay, what's the community amenity? Okay, we can talk about that, too. But I think what we have to do is separate the two issues a little bit here and realize that our staff have to work with their staff or their consultant staff, whatever, and deal with the independent piece of how that fits on a redevelopment application with the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen standards, specific to that application and specific to the stormwater management plan, updated stormwater management plan. Correct?
I would say that's a fair statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Larson.
Yes, thank you. I do think it's helpful, actually, that you have provided a a bit of a reflection on the difference between a stormwater plan and an integrated stormwater management plan, because they're, to me, like comparing apples and oranges. You know, one is very engineered and technical kind of assessment, like Mr. Larson was saying about what would be the impact of this individual development on, you know, what our water balance is and our water management downstream, et cetera. So I I guess my concern is, now that standards have changed and there's been a new implementation of what our expectation is, that in saying, well, since it's built out already, we feel that this probably wouldn't really be all that helpful, when in fact, in hindsight, we probably should have done this a long time ago. Because to me, this is what represents a scientific standard that we now accept to say, what can we do in a watershed that will make it sustainable? So I just look at this and saying, you know, are we, without doing it, are we going to institutionalize what I personally consider to be a lower standard? Because it doesn't take into the whole watershed as a holistic body, and that is where this is going. That's where scientific study is going, that's where our understanding of the community interest is going. Because what's glaringly missing to me, stormwater management never requires any public input. This would require public input. We're now asking the community, what do you think? What do you think about the ecological values we find here? What do you think about the creatures that live here? What do you think is the best and highest use of West Creek relative to, do we think it's thirty percent of the golf course that we should give over to industrial? And finally, the most important thing to me as to why I want an integrated stormwater management plan is because prior to making an assessment, it is a scientific and rational way to know what is appropriate. Is it ten percent? Is it twenty percent? And maybe it's zero percent? Or maybe it's fifty percent, but we have to do all sorts of mitigation. And, you know, those components together, to me, are are very compelling, and I support, hopefully, Counselor Richter's position, that we should be able to get this done before any consideration of having the conversion of the golf course lands, because that was done at a time, I don't think, when we had the scientific understanding that we do now and why it's important to undertake these. And I don't think the Ministry of the Environment, who has lobbied very aggressively, even at the twenty percent, so I think it's more likely than not that five percent or ten percent is actually a better number. But I I think we should, you know, seriously stick to our guns and make sure that we're getting the appropriate information, especially with our community engagement, to find out what people value.
Thank you. I see no further questions. I want to thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. I learned a lot about ISMP and about the differences. You're very clear on that. I think it's very helpful for counsel. Obviously, there's lots of questions and debate in the community on what is appropriate, and counsel has to make those decisions. And there's a lot of other other decisions we have to make along with it. But you've provided a very thorough, very informative, complete information on what an ISMP up in Gloucester and West Creek would be, and I thank you for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're done with that. We want to report this to council. F one is Agricultural Land Commission, application number one zero zero three one one. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, secondor. On Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion on F one. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on F one. Oh. Oh, is the button not working? Okay.
Well, it worked, but I took it off.
Did you want to or not?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Davis.
I just wanted to clarify this piece of property. It'll be, I'm not going to vote for. It'll be, I'm not going to vote for it. It's being reduced into three pieces instead of one, and that's not a benefit to agriculture. I see the agent lives in Maple Ridge, and the owner is in Vancouver. And if I go, I've read the, had a pretty good assessment for the property, and there is some difficulties with this piece of property. But it's, it's, I just, it's not a benefit to agriculture to split up properties, to make smaller pieces of property. It is of no benefit, so I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I won't be supporting this either, and primarily because setting this kind of precedent for breaking down larger properties is unfortunately creating a lot of predation, I would say, in inflating land prices. So, the speculation is really driving this up, and there's a lot of information in the press recently about the pressure that we have on lands in the ALR, because they don't, aren't subject to the foreign buyer's tax, and therefore, people are buying them. And they're not for, necessarily for a farming purpose. And I think that if we're going to protect the ALR, we should do our due diligence to make sure that we're doing the best we can to promote or not promote certain uses, and I don't support this.
Thank you. Councilor Long.
Thank you, worship. I'd just like to get some clarification from staff, then. I don't know if the math actually adds up here. Two parcels of five acres each, so that's 10, right? And one of 5.4, that's 15.4. Oh, I see. Then you've got this 13.3. I didn't see that. So, this complies, and that's the only way, the only thing the motion's asking for. So, am I hearing, then, that we need to rezone all the RU1s should be changed? Is that what we're hearing? Because if we're not going to, if it doesn't comply, either complies or it doesn't, right? I mean, I'm just, I'm wondering if you can give some direction, your worship, to the rest of council, to see if, is there an error there that it shouldn't comply, that we're going to change all those RU1 zoning's?
I'll ask staff. So, Mr. Seffy, if you could confirm that this application complies with the existing zoning in that area for that property?
Yes, your worship. Staff confirms that it does comply with the current zoning. And this is not a discussion that council has not had in the past, in terms of if council wishes to remove that provision, what the options are, and Councilor Long just alluded to one, which is to rezone the RU1s to something that would not provide for a 4.2-acre parcel size.
So, your worship, if we did that, we still couldn't guarantee that it's going to be a benefit to agriculture, because each piece of property is going to have to be examined on its own merits. So, rezoning everything to a different parcel size isn't going to do it, just like it is currently. What does do it is that the requests be considered upon agricultural merits, and that's what this report is suggesting that the Agricultural Land Commission do, that the, that we advise them that it complies with our zoning, but that the requests be considered based upon agricultural merits.
And, Mr. Seffy, just to follow up on Councilor Long, does the Agricultural Land Commission, when we send these through to Agricultural Land Commission, and we basically have to know that it complies with our zoning, are they just rubber stamping them all and approving everything based on us, or are they actually doing their due diligence and looking at, based on agricultural merits?
Absolutely, your worship. In fact, I would say in the past, this is just off the top of my head, in the past five to 10 years, something like 95% perhaps, maybe even higher, of the applications have been rejected regardless of council's position.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Councilor Davis?
You two are throwing softballs around here. We've had this, you know they look at it.
I know.
We've had this argument many times. And the chairperson of the Agricultural Land Reserve told us, if we think, if we don't want it out of the land freeze, we shouldn't send it to them, because it goes from, it goes from here to there, and it goes down to three commissioners. So, you, we've had this argument before. I just, I, it's not a net, it's not a benefit to agriculture to cut a piece of property up, because then you've got three or four, three people, three owners here, and none of them are going to be dairy farm, pardon the hell with dairy farming, none of them are going to be farmers. It's just like the, on 248th, and you're going to point order to me here, Bob, but put in 23, or was it 33 houses to make a buffer, to improve agriculture capacity? Forget it. We're, Jack, I'm sorry, Mayor Froze, you're throwing a softball around.
I'm trying to clarify.
No, I'm terrified. You know darn well that, you know, you know that they don't, they don't look at it. That was a silly question.
It wasn't.
Yeah, it was. You know that they don't just rubber stamp it.
Councilor Davis? Thank you. I ask that you respect my clarification for questions for the rest of council.
Yeah.
And you can farm on five acres. I've proven it. Thank you. Councilor Fox?
Yeah, number one, we're not taking it out of the ALR. Number two, Councilor Long alluded to a whole series of things here, but we get a quarterly report from the ALC, and that quarterly report clearly outlines that the likelihood of this actually happening is minimal.
Zero.
And so, you know what? Does it comply? Yeah, it complies. Is it, is it maybe what I want to see? No. Because I don't necessarily want to see small acreages, or bigger acreages broken up, but it does comply. So, what we have to vote on is what the, does it comply? And let the ALC, and by the way, there's a new, since we talked to the ALC, there's a new chairperson. And she is...
Or CEO.
CEO, yeah. Yeah, sorry, CEO. And she's quite complicit in terms of making sure that agriculture on any property, five, 13, 25 acres is inherently part of the decision. So, anyway.
Okay, we beat this up pretty good. I think I'll call the question. And it carries with Councilor Richter, Councilor Anderson, Councilor Davis opposed. Move on to F2, and that's Audit Consolidated Financial Statements for 2016. Could I have a motion, Councilor Whitmarsh? Second by Councilor Fox. And any questions? Councilor Richter?
Yeah, just a question. Do we get a report, or will we be getting a report on internal controls? Or is that all included in this? It's part of the auditor's job.
Ms. Sinclair?
Oops, sorry. Thank you, Councilor Richter, through Mayor Froze. When the auditors do the audit, they start earlier than the actual period of time that they're looking at the numbers, and they start with a review of our internal controls and internal systems to make sure that there's no gaping holes or any problems with those. So, yes, it is part of the, part of the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, will we get the report on it?
It will all be included in, when we receive the final letter from the auditors. They'll, they'll comment on it.
And are the auditors here?
Yes, they are.
Welcome here.
They enjoyed the last hour.
Yes. And the big question, the big question for the auditors is, is there anything that council should be aware of that is out of norm? Great, that's what we want to hear. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion, council? I'll call the question on F2. And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to F3, and it's Town...
After through you, Mayor Froze, appoint the auditors for the next year, or is that just an understood?
It's done on a five-year cycle, your worship, so that's been previously attended to.
Okay, that's fine. Continuity is important, that's all.
Thank you. All right, F3, Township of Larnie Fire Service Master Plan Report. Could I have a motion, or several? Councilor Whitmarsh, second by Councilor Anderson, discussion, Councilor Richter?
Yes, I was just wondering if the IAFF, our local, will be consulted on, because it's not, I think it's implied, but it's not clearly stated, and I'd like it to be included in the motion that the IAFF be consulted.
I believe, our chief is here, and I believe it's even in the report stakeholders. Is it in the report already?
Yes, it's in the report.
Yes, so, I know we had some discussions about that, and they are being consulted. So, Mr. Backen, is it required to have that specific, or, you know, I don't want to limit it, we don't want to, you know, make sure that someone is not included, but there's a lot of other parties.
Well, we could just add an amendment in there, and focus community stakeholder consultation process, including, so add including our local IAFF.
Yeah.
I would make that amendment.
Technically, it can be done, your worship, but then it opens the door, but what, but why not list the other stakeholders as well?
There's a lot of stakeholders. That's kind of what I was trying to say. It's already in the report, and it's already part of it. So, the amendment can be, it certainly, take the amendment.
I'm making that amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment? Councilor Anderson seconds the amendment, discussion on the amendment. Again, I kind of defer to Mr. Backen, and said, I think it's included, I've got the report, had my discussions, and I know it's there. So, certainly, I think I'll leave it the way it is and not support the amendment. Councilor Fox?
Yeah, two things. Number one, we talked about this with the chief when he made a presentation to us in camera, and that was one of the very specific questions that was asked, without trying to divulge anything from in camera. Number two, where is it mentioned in here? Does, someone give me the page reference. Can you give me the page reference, chief? I'm sorry, where it's mentioned? Just, there's a lot of information here, like 84 pages of it, and I can't remember where it was. I did see it, and I know it's implicit.
It's this internal.
Members of the fire department, paid call suppression, firefighters, queer suppression, career non suppression.
What page?
Fire Department Chief Officers, paid call presence committee, union executive, local 4552. I think it covered pretty much everybody who...
Which page?
13 of your...
Okay, that's right. Okay. All right, so partnerships and networking is under?
It's under internal, internal, and lists all the different members of the fire department, there's six different categories.
Okay, got it. Nice follow-up now.
Collaboration partners, yeah. Okay, Councilor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I realize it may be redundant to put it there, however, I think it's important to do it, because sometimes, you know, who is going to have access to our whole report to see it there? I think it's great to underline the fact that this is a unified effort, and that it's going to be done in a very comprehensive and consultative way. So, I supported the amendment to the motion.
You, Councilor Richter?
Yeah, I think we should include, maybe change it to all firefighting staff, including all our firefighting staff.
Why don't you take the wording right out of the report? It's very inclusive.
Well, you know what, Mr. Mayor? I wasn't at that in-camera meeting where you discussed that report, and I happen to think that there are some very important groups that will be affected by this report, that I want to make sure have full and fair opportunity to comment on the report.
So, I was suggesting perhaps using the wording that's in the report for your amendment, because then it would be fully inclusive.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. The IAFF and all firefighting staff.
That's, I'm reading on page 13, and it's very inclusive there. So, if you want, if, I could certainly take that, there's no opposition to the amendment to the amendment. My council can certainly take that, but if anybody wishes to discuss that, I don't take it as an amendment.
Yeah, well, we can have it as an amendment to an amendment.
No, I'm assessing council, if there's any opposition, otherwise I'll just take it as amendment to the amendment. Seeing none, we'll take it to the amendment, to include those words. So, now, on the amendment to the amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Yes.
Yeah, and all firefighting staff. So, IAFF and all firefighting staff.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment fails. That's Councilor Fox, Councilor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Councilor Qualley, Councilor Davis, Councilor Long opposed. So, now we're to the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Call the question. There was amendment to the amendment.
No, you did the amendment to amendment by unanimous consent, so it was just, so it was just the amendment.
Yeah, okay, so you're right. So...
Back to the main motion.
Back to the main motion, that's right. Amendment to the amendment was by unanimous consent, that went through, so amendment was voted on. Okay, so I'll call the question on F3. Main motion, help.
Sorry.
The main motion, the council, the main amendment. No, the main motion. Oh, no, the main motion, that's right.
As no longer amended.
You know, I go fishing for a weekend, and everything just leaves my head. All right, so the main motion.
I have a question. Wait, is this not the motion?
Okay, let's, I'm going to cancel the vote, so we can get this clarified. Councilor Fox?
Okay, so, I'm looking here at the report, and it's basically, and my perspective here is, there's two, two pieces here, partnerships and networking, which includes RCMP, and I think a very important piece, which is the ambulance service, health board, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's consultation partners. And I, this is very, very, very extensive. This is not going to happen overnight, I can tell you that. If you're going to try and do this consultation, chief, you're going to be in here for a long time, including community ratepayer groups. I didn't know we had ratepayer groups, but I guess if we have ratepayer groups, I guess you're out there with them, too. My question then becomes, in the internal, you've kind of listed them, 1, 2, 3, 4. I'm just wondering if that's priority, or if that's phasing, or if there's anything related to how you've outlined that? Because number one is members of the fire department. Is that where you're starting? Through you, your worship, to the chief.
Do them all prior to the final report. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a question on the main motion. Calling the question. And it carries unanimously. And move on to correspondence, there's none, minutes of committees, there's seen to advisory committee, and council priorities committee, could I have a motion to receive? Councilor Anderson, second, by Councilor Davis. Any resolutions, any discussion? Call the question, H1. Carries unanimously. Is there nothing rising from the minutes? Is there anything, any other business? Councilor Richter?
Yes, there are two items that were distributed to council in the, that I'd like to bring up, in the May, in the June 8th package, number 19, with regards to traffic calming on 256th Street and 64th Avenue. I'm wondering if staff could get a report on this, because I think the very valid point was written, was raised by the letter writer, that asked that the intersection at 256th and 64th be a four-way stop from a two-way stop. This would go a long way to slowing down traffic and making the corner less dangerous. Surely, that is less expensive than the four fire trucks, two ambulances, multiple police vehicles, and air ambulance that were called into service this morning for hours for just one of the many crashes. So, I would like to get a report from staff on that particular part of the township, and if, in fact, the suggestion to have a four-way stop is a viable option.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, it has been forwarded to your division, and so, would you be providing a memo to council regarding that?
Your worship, while I don't recall the specifics of this particular one, there have been many, many correspondence pieces to the council. Our typical process is to respond to them regardless. And I recall, in similar cases, making reference to the warrant analysis that's typically done pursuant to federal guidelines, the Transportation Association of Canada guidelines, in terms of modifications to traffic signs and signals, and in terms of traffic calming, referring the resident to the process that we have in terms of the number of applications and number of locations that are currently on a list, and the process that we go through typically on an annual basis, in terms of requesting council funding, or council providing funding on a budget, as part of the budget process, to do two or three traffic calming measures in a year, subject to approval of the residents, subject to the petition process. So, that's a typical process that we typically follow. And I can certainly look to see if there was a response to this, particularly individual or not, and if not, provide a response and copy that to council.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask, if you could copy to council or put it in distribution.
Yeah, to me, I think this township resident is raising a public safety issue, and as a councillor, I'd like to know if this particular stretch of the road is problematic in terms of repeated and ongoing accidents, and what we can do to stop that.
Thank you. Okay, and that's everything. Is there any other business?
Yes, I have, too.
Okay.
And the June 12th, the report to council, item number four, our items distributed to council, item number four with regards to the new waste bins up in Walnut Grove. And the letter writer, I think, makes a very valid point, that the bins are blocking the announce, or the signage for their particular neighborhood, and perhaps that's not the best place for them. Can they be moved to another location? So, will council get some feedback on this person's... So, will council get some feedback on this person's request?
Mr. Seifi, I know it's been forwarded to your engineering.
Yes, thank you, your worship. This one's a bit more fresh in my mind, because it was later, it was more recent. So, I do know that the response has been provided. Staff has looked at other alternative locations and will continue to see if there's a more appropriate location, and will, will copy the, the response to council as well.
Thank you.
Are you taking the bins out of its current location so it's not blocking the neighborhood sign?
I believe staff are reviewing that, and will be looking at moving it.
That's correct.
Locations, yeah. And get back to us. Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I've got three things here. Number one, could, through you, your worship, to staff, maybe if we could communicate with the Ministry of Transportation, the 264th off-ramp is in dire need of some attention. I've had two people talk to me about having to pay substantial amounts of money to repair tires in potholes and poorly maintained off-ramps onto, from the Highway 1 on to 264th. Could we potentially send a, a letter to them, just requesting some attention paid to that to ensure that they're in appropriate working order before? Do we need a motion, or can we just, can staff just do that? It's not our jurisdiction, but it, we can request it.
It's just a letter, your worship, so we can just attend to that?
Yeah.
Sure, you can just, by direction, thank you.
Okay. Second thing is South Langley. The RCMP did an outstanding job, I think, and, and we can reflect back on the issues between 248th and 256th, some of the problems in the neighborhood, and our staff, RCMP staff reacted very proactively and, and worked with the residents, and we haven't heard much since. It's not mean it's perfectly quiet. The problem that I, has been evidenced to me is, it seems the bubbles moved west, and we've had some problems. There's been a theft of a motorhome, a tractor, off a 232nd, 240th area. And so, maybe through you, your worship, if I could ask that the issue be brought to Superintendent Powers' attention, and I can't remember the name of the officer that was involved, started with a B, I think, that was heading that up? Do you remember? Maybe, who was the officer that was heading it up? Anyway, if he could expand his scope of operation a little to the west, it would be much appreciated working with the residents, and maybe, I know they started a neighborhood block watch program and so on and so forth. It might be valuable to communicate with them.
Block watch captain?
Uh, no. Yeah, sure. Okay, another job. Anyway, could we communicate that with Mr. Powers? Is he coming, Superintendent Powers, is he coming to give us an update before the summer break?
In July, your worship.
Okay, so, maybe it could communicate, and he could respond to that in July. The last thing I wanted to bring up, and earlier we had a talk, a discussion about Gloucester, but I just wanted to say, in the last number of months, we have lost substantial employment in this community to neighboring communities in two very large moves of corporate offices and manufacturing operations. The latest was in the paper about a month ago, about a company that left for Abbotsford and took 350 jobs. And the other one that happened about five months ago, four months ago, was a massive exodus from this community to Campbell Heights. And no, it wasn't Weir or EBCo. It was Starline Windows. And they took almost 1,000 employees out of our, employment jobs out of our community. This is serious stuff. Our goal is always to have one, one job for, per, per working person in our community, and these two employees left, employers left, because there's not enough opportunity to build the size of, of facilities they need to do the manufacturing and product preparation for the global market that we, we live in. And it's unfortunate when we lose out to neighboring communities. They gain the jobs, we lose the jobs. And I think it's, it's unfortunate, and I think we have to be very cognizant of that as we discuss things like industrial lands, industrial growth, industrial opportunity in our community, because we need jobs as much as anybody does to employ our citizens in our boundaries. Comment done.
Okay. Counsel Long?
Well, I wanted to jump in on this 264th thing, so let's remind council and staff that we've sent a letter asking for improvements, because it's all very well to fill those potholes, but that's just a tiny bit of a, of a, of a Band-Aid. And the reason that they're potholes is because everyone's, they're making a two-lane exit off the freeway where there's only one lane. So, they're creating this sort of gravelled area there, and that gets the potholes. The whole intersection needs a lot of work. So, we need to stress this. And not only the coming off the freeway is a disaster, but also in the morning times, heading onto the freeway, backs up way down to the zoo. So, there are significant issues with that interchange. And as I mentioned, when the announcement of 200-plus million dollars in the freeway improvements, which we're delighted to have, if you don't include 264th in there somehow, I think you're, it's a real mistake. So, maybe staff could follow up on that request that was already made, and give us some kind of a presentation or report on how much, you know, headway we're making with the province and addressing problems at 264th. And if we're not getting where we need to be, then I think we have to take another action and get over there and start slapping somebody's heads. I mean, shouldn't have said that, sorry. Mr. Backen looks terribly puzzled, maybe he has the answer.
In part, your worship, we know under the, shall we say, the current structure, I use the term loosely, that they were going to build as far as the funds would allow. We don't see there being more funds. In fact, what we see happening if, with the uncertainty, is the opposite. We see that certain projects may actually be tabled and put down the list. So, I think it'd be wise to keep this as a watching matter until we have clarity in terms of the direction, and then it may be necessary for a visit to Victoria with the hopes of saving the funding as opposed to trying to get additional funding.
And I hear that, and I concur to some extent, except if there's going to be a cutback on funding, it shouldn't be at the interchanges. It probably, it may be that the widening doesn't happen the full length of the freeway. But the, currently, with the, with the, with the freeway in its current configuration, which is not widened, it's disaster. So, 264th, regardless of where the province goes with its highway improvement plan, needs to be addressed, and I think we have to make that very, very clear and very loud.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Put your mic on. There you go.
Yeah. To go back, one issue that Counsel Richter raised, on that issue of 264th, 256th and 64th, you know why there's a problem there? Because people skip and don't want to go down the freeway, because there's always